Regular town council meeting for Wednesday, December 27, 2023. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Mike Corilio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondina.
Present.
Gerald Swets.
Here.
Michael Schilling.
Present.
Joe Wizomati.
Present.
David Buslin.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Item three, public comment. First on the list, Terry Nellman.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. My name is Terry N. Nellman, address of 9500 West 103rd Place and a St. John residence for just about 25 years now. Excuse me, I'm here today. I did not make the other meetings, the last four meetings that were scheduled, only because I decided that I was going to wait until this meeting to address the situation with Mr. Swets. So with that said.
It's gonna be the same as the last couple of times in asking to resign. Can you just refrain from it?
I believe, I believe, Mr. Schilling, with my right to free speech, I believe I can, I can speak my, my mind.
Problem, I was just.
Well, no, no, you're right. You're absolutely right. But the thing is, we still have this gentleman sitting here. And the reason why I'm here is, again, since you brought it up or interjected, Mr. Schilling, are you going to ask Mr. Swets to resign his position?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Mr. Schilling, I asked you a question before in regards to, number one, Lennar is a profit organization. Number two, the Gates of St. John is a profit organization. And now I'm asking you again, Mr. Schilling, after a little duration of time and I would say a court appearance, is the town of St. John in the business for profit?
Is the town of St. John in the business for profit?
Is the town of St. John in the business for profit?
No, we're not in the business of profit. We're in the business of providing services.
Okay. And with that said, I need to move on. You will not, you will not ask Mr. Swets here to resign his position. What I'm saying to you again is, Mr. Swets has, needs to be removed from this town council. He has created an embarrassment to this town. I have to keep coming up here, which I have no problem. I'm a very outspoken person. I speak the truth. I bring documents. I provided you with documents. Mr. Swets has got to be removed. If he does not remove on his own, the town council must remove him legally. With that said, my respect to this town council is not an issue to any members except for our Mr. Gerald Swets, which is not have the best interest of the voters and the taxpayers on the town of St. John, specifically the Gates of St. John. Thank you for letting me speak, to have my piece, and I would like to come back in the future and exercise my right to free speech. Is that okay, Mr. Schilling?
Sorry?
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
Marilyn Walsh?
Oh, I, I didn't know I was like put there. Oh, I didn't need to put that.
Oh, okay.
Sign in.
Not a problem. Scott Franco?
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Scott. I'm here today with Surf Internet. We're a fiber provider and fiber and high-speed internet provider to communities. We met earlier this summer with some of the staff just to introduce ourselves and also express our interest of bringing fiber to the community, into the places within the community that we feel with our feasibility, with some understanding, there's some places that are unserved yet, particularly with fiber to the home. We, we had a pretty productive meeting as far as introducing ourselves and kind of walking through the fiber process, construction process, which I know you're familiar with. You, you also own some of your own fiber. We've had some follow-up meetings since then, including with some of your staff, and we even put a list together of some of the places unserved by the town, hoping that we could take a look at how we could package that up if we were to move forward with the construction in, you know, in alignment with your town. I'm here tonight just as we go into the new year, just to sort of re-express our interest to be here and hope that we can have another round of, of meetings with the proper folks to, to get some guidance and to see if we're still have mutual interest in working together throughout that process. So understand, this is just public comments, and I can't really address further than that. Just wanted to reintroduce ourselves. We haven't had a chance to do that to the council previously. We just met with staff. And as we get into the next year, maybe we can, we can get some guidance on what those next steps could possibly look like so we can keep a process in motion, if that's possible.
Well, come to the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Also, I'll be gone and you'll have new people to look at.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak from the public? All right, close public comment. Move around to approval of the minutes. In front of you, you have the Town Council Special Study Session amended for November 16, 2023, Town Council Regular Meeting for November 21, 2023, Town Council Special Meeting for November 29, 2023, and Town Council Special Meeting for December 7, 2023. If there's no issues, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended November 16, November 21, November 29, and December 7 of 2023.
Second.
Have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, public hearing, Resolution 2023-1227, Resolution authorizing the additional appropriations for various funds, proof of publications.
The proofs of publication are compliant with Indiana law.
Thank you. I'll open the, or opening comments, Joe?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution authorizes the additional appropriations to various funds for the fiscal year accordingly. The General Fund, $11,500, NERC N.L.P.A. grant, $128,279.13, ambulance capital, $3,200, and the CCI fund of $3,200.
Thank you, Joe. I'll open the floor to public comment. Any public comment on the resolution? Going once, going twice, three times. I'll close the floor on public comment. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-1227.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. New business, financial matters of the corporation, request to purchase, there are a total of 10 requests to purchases and the combined total of $4,8,657.43 for approval. Beth, would you list those off, please?
Sure. Your first one is to Vail Appraisal Group totaling $4,500, and that's for your Earl Drive Appraisals. Boonder Electric for $4,712, and that's for streetlight repair at 8695 West 105th. You have Superior Engine for $7,270.3, that's labor and materials to repair the power steering, suspension, and transmission to fire truck number 427. Boonder Electric for $6,500, and that's repair to two streetlights at Morse Place. Another Boonder Electric for $4,560, and that's streetlight repair at 8640 Lake Hills Drive. Federal Signal for $11,530.40, and that's for SRO Unit 31 upfitting. Phil Garden for $16,560, and that's for your soil leaf integration. Coalliance for $17,550, and that's your unleaded fuel. Ferguson Water Works for $315,000, and that's water meter register replacements. And then Peerless Midwest for $20,475, and that's Phase II wellhead protection plan, totaling 10 RTPs totaling $4,8,657.43.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, the accounts payable voucher dated December 27, 2023, representing payment for payroll, purchases, supplies, equipment, services rendered to the town of St. John in the combined total of $6,55,284.91. Any questions over the docket? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider motion to approve progress payment to First Group. Oh, I got ahead of myself. Consider, motion to approve progress payment to FH Passion for the 93rd Avenue Project in the amount of $705,968.89 and authorize Clerk Treasurer to issue payment from the 2020 Geo Bond?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider motion to approve progress payment to First Group for construction engineering for the 93rd Avenue Project in the amount of $25,935.49 and authorize the Clerk Treasurer to issue payment from 2020 Geo Bond?
So moved.
A second.
Motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Ordinances and Resolutions, Resolution Number 2023-1227A, Resolution declaring an emergency and approving an extension for repayment of loans until no later than June 30, 2024, extends the loan from the CCD loan to the TIF one. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, Resolution Number 2023-1227B, Resolution transferring monies from the CCD Fund 4402 to the NERC N.L.P.A. Grant Fund 2405.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Resolution Number 2023-1227C, Resolution transferring monies from various funds to the local Ridge and Bro, Bridge Matching Grant Fund 4500, transfers monies from budget funds into one single fund for payout. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-1227C?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Resolution Number 2023-1227D, Civil Resolution Providing for the Transfer of Appropriations from Various Funds of the Town of St. John?
So moved.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, the council action, consider motion to approve agreement for services between St. John Township, Lake County, Indiana, and the Town of St. John for fire services for Jan.
You skipped a couple.
You skipped two.
That's it?
B and F.
Well, you went down too many here.
Oh, no, I was reading off the computer here. Next is Resolution Number 2023-1227E, Sanitary Resolution Providing for the Transfer of Appropriations for Various Funds of the Town of St. John?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, Resolution Number 2023-1227A, or 27F, this is the Water District Resolution Providing the Transfer of Appropriations for the Various Funds of the Town of St. John?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Next, consider motion to approve agreement for services. This is between the St. John Township, Lake County, Indiana, and the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, for fire services from January 1, 2024 to January 31, 2024.
It actually should be December.
It should be December.
December 31st.
There's a typing, typing error.
Okay, December 1st.
31st.
December 31st.
2024, that's what the agreement says.
Will you get my teleprompter right?
Yeah, that would be a very short agreement.
All right, from December 31, 2023 to?
No.
December 31st.
December 31st.
January, it's January 1, 2024, and it expires on December 31, 2024.
All right. Not a problem.
And this, I, I was able to get my budget approved by DLGF early, so I was able this year to go in December and get all of the fire agreements completed. And so, St. John is my last one. The, so the, there's only two differences in this agreement compared to the previous years. One is, instead of it saying retroactive to January 1, it is now effective January 1. And then the other thing, I was able to give about a little over 7% increase from last year's agreement. Otherwise, it's exactly the same.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the services agreement between the St. John Township and the Town of St. John, effective date December, or January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Kathy.
We'll take care of you next year.
Happy New Year, Kathy.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. It's, you know what? I look forward to working with everyone next year, but it's been a pleasure working with all of you these, this last year, and I wish all of you a blessed New Year. Thank you.
Right back at you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, consider motion to defer and refer to Town Attorney Right-of-Way Development Agreement between the Town of St. John and the St. John Evangelist Catholic Church.
What is that about?
What is this, Joe?
So this is for the right-of-way escrow, if you will. Since there was monies that were left over as part of the contract for the 93rd Expansion, as part of that, there was some concrete work that was supposed to be involved with that. This basically refers this matter to the Town Attorney to finish the development of that agreement and present it to the new council.
All right. All right. I'll make a motion to consider, motion to defer and refer to Town Attorney Right-of-Way for Development Agreement between the Town of St. John and St. John Evangelist Catholic Church.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider motion to approve supplemental agreement number one with First Group for Construction Engineering for Kyleman Street as part of the West 93rd Avenue Project in the additional amount not to exceed $60,000.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Just, just so the council knows, Evan was here at our study session. This is for the additional engineering required for Kyleman to finish out that additional roadway. So that's, this is the additional engineering cost for that.
From where we left off this year to School Street?
To finish that, that roadway off.
Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider motion to approve agreement with the City of Crown Point to amend Crown Point's proposed regulated water and wastewater territories continuous to the Town of St. John. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider acceptance of maintenance letter of credit in the amount of $394,536.90 for Preserve West Unit 1.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider release of performance letter of credit in the amount of $277,945.80 for Preserve West Unit 1.
So moved.
Do I motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 I didn't hear a second. I didn't hear a second.
Okay.
I'll do, I'll do the second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider release of performance letter of credit in the amount of, let me do that one. Consider acceptance of two-year maintenance letter of credit in the amount of $29,080.50 for Continental Unit 5, uh, 3.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider release of performance surety in the amount of $5,500.00 for Continental Unit 3.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider acceptance of performance surety in the amount of $1,336,172.63 for Streamside.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider the uniform conflict of interest for Matthew Eastu, Isto? This is the gentleman that built the table?
That's correct. He's also looking to do other work. However, his original conflict of interest statement that was approved only listed the table. This is kind of more of a broader.
All right.
So moved.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, consider appointment of individual party affiliation Democrat for the Parks and Recreation Board term to expire on December 31, 2024.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
The council has before it as Democratic affiliated candidate, Rose Kennedy, for the vacant Parks Board slot. That term is set to expire December 31 of 2024.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve Rose Kennedy?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Next, consider 2024 calendar schedule of meetings for Town Council, Boards, and Commissions.
Is this something that we need to do, or is this something for the next council?
I was gonna say, should we defer it?
I just said, let's defer this.
Until next year?
I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion to defer the schedule of meetings for the Town Council for 2024.
I'll second.
Motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Next, consider motion to approve separation agreement and general release. This is for the Town Manager.
So moved.
We got any discussion on it, Mike?
Yeah, we can have a discussion.
I'll support it.
I have a motion, I have a second. Open the floor to discussion.
Yeah, on the, we just got this agreement about 10 minutes to five, and I want to know who wrote it, and I want to ask Mr. Dave, Mr. Westlin, are, are we legally obligated to pay Joe for his 60 days of severance?
The answer to the first, yeah, no, the answer to the first question, I'm not sure who the author is.
Okay.
I can tell you the author was not me. The 60 days, so you have, there are two agreements in front of you, Wayne. One looks like the 60 days, and then the other one looks like a 30 day. So I'm, I'm assuming that the motion was for the 30 day.
Yes.
But are you legally obligated? No.
And it's like, we got this revision at 6:58 PM, so we don't even have a chance to look at it.
Well, I was.
And let me, let me, you're legally obligated, I think, under your, your employee manual to pay things like unused sick pay and unused vacation pay. So I want to make sure I'm clear. When I answered that question, the answer is, I think, and, and I haven't had a chance to review the employee manual, but I'm pretty sure your employee manual requires the payment of the accrued but unused sick time and vacation time. So that would be items B and C, and obviously I haven't had the opportunity to check the math. But assuming those numbers are correct, that would be an obligation. What's contained in A, that's what my answer went to, was that you're, no, I don't believe you're obligated legally to do it.
We're not obligated legally, but it was in a contract.
The contract, yes.
With the Town Manager.
So.
It ends as soon as.
Yeah, so the, the contract, the original employment agreement called for a, a start date and a term, and by law, the term ends when your term in office would end. Okay? So that would expire, I think, technically speaking, on January 1 at 11:59 AM. So that's an executed contract legally, right? Like, the term has been fully, so I think, can you do this legally? Yeah. Are you, but Wayne's question was, are you legally oblig- Yeah, are you, but Wayne's question was, are you legally obligated? That's a different answer. So, you know, because you've run the whole employment agreement from start to finish, right, all that would be left to pay is unaccrued vacation and sick time. But you could legally do it. It's, it's strictly a judgment or policy legislative decision. It's not a legal question.
So just for clarification, and the motion was for thirty days?
Yes.
Okay. Cause there's a, there are a couple of different agreements out there, okay? Yeah, so that was my support was for thirty days.
Agreed. Any other discussion? I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
I'm gonna vote present.
Motion passes three to one with one voting present. All right, item D is this information that was placed on file with the clerk treasurer, uh, civic plus agreement uh, for Modesto Services, uh, item permit for Acorn dated November ninth, twenty twenty three, uh, fully executed interlocal agreement with Lake County Joliet Ditch Improvement, master meter sole provider letter for Ferguson Water Works, public hearing notice, uh, one thirteen twenty, West one hundred and seventh place. This is November twentieth, twenty twenty three. Town of St. John three-year growth excess levy determination, Town of St. John sanitary district three-year growth excess levy determination, uh, Town of St. John water district three-year growth excess levy determination. Uh, moving on, uh, staff reports, Beth?
Just wishing everybody a happy New Year, and everybody best wishes on future endeavors.
Thank you, Beth. Dave Schilling from Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'll be brief this evening. Uh, the Acorn Water Main Sanitary Project and the Community Crossings paving project are both substantially complete. Uh, I know there's a couple punchless items in each project, which will be addressed in the spring. And also, the Lake Hills Dam inspection has been completed. Everything looks good, there were some minor recommendations that were forwarded onto Public Works, and the report itself was sent on to the Indiana Department of Natural Resources as required. Thank you, hopefully everybody has a, a happy New Year.
Well, thank you for your work, uh, that you've done while I've been on the council here, and, uh, thanks for getting that Acorn project done, that was a hassle, and you guys got it done.
Splendid job.
It's a good, it was an exciting project.
Town staff and...
Yeah, I think both of those projects went great.
Okay, we appreciate your hard work, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great New Year.
You too.
Town manager, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very pleased to announce that the town's civil funds were approved by the DLGF for four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars in excess levy appeal, which were already anticipated revenues for the twenty twenty four budget. However, both water and sanitary were denied. Um, if we choose to contest the denial, we can do so under the Indiana Code. Um, these correspondents, uh, were placed with the clerk treasurer's office, um, tonight. Um, I wanna take this opportunity to wish each and every one a very blessed and happy New Year. As town manager, I'm proud of the accomplishments for the Town of St. John for twenty twenty three. We've been working hard this last year and achieved a great deal. Among the many things that we've completed, um, we presented a forty million, forty point five million dollar balanced budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, which included our water and sewer utilities for the first time in our town's history. We completed six miles of roadway resurfacing and improvements, completed a two point four million dollar C C M G, uh, project that we secured a one million dollar grant for, uh, four million dollar, uh, West Ninety-third Avenue project, which was funded by bond proceeds. We completed a one point four million dollar Acorn Drive Water Main Sewer and Roadway Project to replace Water Main Sewer and eliminated a lift station. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of improvements to Gates Park are scheduled for twenty twenty four, a portion of which is funded through the C D B G grant. Um, our corridor study for one hundred and first Avenue and Calumet Avenue, uh, and one hundred and ninth Avenue is underway and nearing completion with our consultant, TESCA. Um, this will be the roadmap for the future improvements for these vital roadways. Um, TESCA wanted to kind of delay this, so that way the new council can weigh in on some of the objectives. Uh, we agree and support that decision to do so. Um, created a, and established the Economic Development Area TIF District for the St. John Commons. We negotiated and approved a development agreement with St. John Commons Developer, issuing one point eight million dollar in developer bonds for this project to fund public infrastructure. We approved a three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar bridge replacement on Joliet in cooperation with Lake County for twenty twenty four to add an additional lane, sidewalks, and shared paths. Lake County will pay nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars for this project as well. The four hundred thousand dollar roadway improvement project is teed up for Kyleman Avenue to begin in twenty twenty four with funding that we secured through Lake County. We completed a study and approved a five-year park impact fee for our park improvements funded by the new residential development. We kicked off the Phase One Engineering for the Klein Avenue Extension secured through a grant through N R P C and N dot. The media, media filter changeout on our water, uh, water treatment facilities to improve water quality is underway and ready for bidding for twenty twenty four. Completion, uh, of planning for wells nine and eight with approval to be online in twenty twenty four, construction of our new wellhouses will be underway. And finally, we completed our, um, sanitary capacity study as well, and that information has been conveyed to the sanitary district as well as the town council. Uh, many of our Public Works projects that we have been planning are the result of a new partnership with Robinson Engineering. I know nobody wants to go through planning without, but without proper planning, we end up with an inferior product. Um, and if, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. Many thanks to our current town council members, President Mike Schilling, Vice President Jerry Swets, members Mike Orellio, Wayne Pondinas, Brian Blazak, for their unwavering support and dedication to the Town of St. John and getting things done. Thanks to all those who worked behind the scenes, day in and day out, Dave Westlin and Nicole Bennett from Westlin and Bennett, Attorney Adam Decker, Attorney Phil Fasenda from Barnes and Thornburg, uh, Tom Nagel, Dave Schilling, no C, and Russ Prequist and their support staff from Robinson Engineering, Evan Lavalay, Scott Pruitt from First Group Engineering, American Structure Point, Danny and Steve, Steve Dalton from Center Dalton, Francesca Lawrence and Mike Blue with TESCA and Associates, our fantastic staff here at St. John, all of our boards and commission members for making all of this happen. I wanna thank our outgoing town council members and wish our new town council much success in the new year. With a renewed sense of optimism for twenty twenty four, I wish all a very happy New Year, thank you.
Happy New Year to you.
Thanks, Joe, it's been a pleasure working with you the last seven months.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, town council, Wayne?
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy New Year and thank all our departments, police, fire, public works, clerical, building and planning, everybody that helped make the town successful in this last year. Uh, Merry, uh, Merry Christmas. Happy New Year to everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Jerry?
Yeah, I echo the same thing, just thank you, a happy New Year, first of all, and hope that everyone in town has a blessed New Year, and then thanks to all the departments that did a great job this year, that was very successful. Um, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Schilling, for being our president this year and, and leading us very well. And then, of course, I'd like to thank you and Brian Blazak and Mike Orellio for their service to the town the last few years, and it's, we've accomplished a lot. Um, we were very successful in a lot of things that we set our minds to do. And, um, yeah, I think, uh, the town is in a better position, uh, because of the work that you guys did, so again, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Brian?
Well, to go along with the rest of the, rest of the team here, I, uh, I think that Joe ran some of the listing, this council in total, um, with different members of the council doing the hard work. We, uh, established the Riverfront District under the new Indiana law and obtained ten liquor licenses, which are now going to be available in the Town of St. John going forward for a thousand dollars apiece. We created commercial districts along Route Forty-one and Route Two Thirty-one, which is one hundred and ninth street, and the TIF districts associated with those corridors. Um, we installed and created a road impact fee, one of only five municipalities in the state of Indiana currently carrying a road impact fund. That fund, as of report in November, contained two point three million dollars, of which cost the St. John taxpayers not one cent. That money was all through the building permits for all new construction, so it's paid for by the people moving into town. There will be no impact on residents' taxes when spending this two point three million. Going forward, my recommendation was that we spend the money in, almost in total, on one hundred and ninth and White Oak Roundabout with two lanes. That'll be up to the new council to decide what to do with the two point three, and that fund will continue to grow. Over the last four years, we've attained C C M G grants, and we already have twenty twenty four approved for going forward, um, come next spring to get road improvement. We did gain four million dollars in the four years we were in office in grants. The, as Joe mentioned, the corridor study is nearing completion for the Route Forty-one corridor and one hundred and ninth street, and I believe TESCA is going to finish that in the early spring, and that had, um, home, homeowners input. So therefore, it's going to be something put together by the town and the citizens of the town. We completed the Eighty-Fifth Street project and improved with the help of Sherrville and the county. That was an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar project that we cooperatively, cooperatively put together with Sherrville and Lake County. We also got approved the Klein Avenue Extension, which will extend Klein Avenue from Ninety-third all the way down to one hundred and Thirty-third in Cedar Lake. St. John will end up ponying up two million dollars, and the rest of ten million dollars will be put up by the federal government. Route Forty-one and Ninety-third intersection, which was over four million dollars, was just completed on time. And that, unto itself, has been a great improvement. We've gotten a lot of good positive comments about it. Kyleman Street upgrade, upgrade will be done in the early spring, and hopefully that will be up and running by, uh, summer of next year. The Acorn project was one point four million, and as you heard earlier, that was new water mains, new sewers, new water lines. And that was planned and completed in a timely manner and finished about a month ago. The St. John Commons T I F, TIF District, was approved with one point eight million for the development, and the town itself will benefit over the next twenty years, getting one point two million dollars for the town, which will have no specific purpose. It will be able to be spent as the town sees fit. And lastly, there were nine developments that were completed in our four years in service, and every one of them has brought, um, higher appraised, assessed value for our town and has improved, uh, um, basically a lot of everybody's property values. And that, sir, I wish Jerry, Mike, Mike, it's been a pleasure working with all of you, and, uh, I've, I've enjoyed working for the Town of St. John, gonna miss it.
Thank you, Brian. Michael?
I don't know how much I can add to what Brian just said, cover the gamut for sure. Uh, I do wanna add that it's been a privilege to serve the residents of St. John. Um, it always is a, a privilege to serve. Uh, it has been also a pleasure to serve with such competent and dedicated staff, uh, as in the Building Department, Sergio and his staff. Uh, Bob Davis from Public Works is a dedicated servant of the people. Uh, also Mike O'Shea, who is new, he is also a dedicated servant to the St., uh, to St. John Parks. Uh, it is an absolute privilege to serve with people of that status. Uh, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention also Joe Wizwadi, who is our town manager, our fearless town manager, who has taken a fair amount of abuse, but has done through that a great job in our town. Um, there was many, many projects that were not moving forward whatsoever when, when Joe arrived, and one after another, after another, after another, has seen completion under his steady hand. Um, so I am thankful for that, I live in this town, as we, most of us in this room do, uh, and then we are all better for it. Uh, with that said, I hope everybody here had a Merry Christmas, and I wish you all a Happy New Year, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I wish everybody a Happy New Year, I've enjoyed working with all my fellow colleagues up here. Some of it's been rough, some of it's been easygoing. It's been a good four years, I enjoy serving, uh, the, the public. Public service is a, a tough business. A lightning rod at most times, but, uh, Joe, I appreciate, you know, working with you, I said that earlier, the last year and seven months, or whatever it's been, but I appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Jason, thank you. Brian, Mike, Dave, it's been a pleasure. Jerry, Wayne, Beth, um, the public, the incoming council. I'll hand off my gavel here when I adjourn the meeting here, and, uh, if anybody else has anything, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, signee Day, which translated means at the end of the program.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second?